Good evening. I would like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, August 24th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We have a few folks in person and we have our friends out in Zoom land also. I've been reminded by our health professionals as we start to bring people in person, please follow the guidelines on masking and unmasking based on vaccination status. So that's just a reminder from our great health professionals. Thank you. Real quick, good evening and again, thank you all for joining this special meeting in August. I know many of you are trying to have some downtime and family vacation in August, so I truly appreciate your participating with us this evening in this board meeting. I also want to thank all those parents and community members that have sent emails and letters to the board providing their thoughts around school opening plans. We have survived, and I will say in some ways thrived, as a community working together. We finished the school year with an awesome graduation ceremony and many other stepping up and celebratory ceremonies in person. We continue to be a district that is recognized for our commitment to in-person learning and working together to have the right protocols in place for a safe learning environment for our students, teachers, and staff. We learned a lot over the last year and we did it all without a playbook. We finished the year in person. We are going to keep that focus on a safe learning environment for our students, teachers, and staff. We are going back to school in person with a regular school schedule Monday, August 30. That has been and will continue to be our primary goal, in-person learning in a safe environment. The in-person safe learning environment will include a mask based on the governor's executive order and mask mandate which is in place through September 30. Unless something changes at the state level, the district will follow those orders. Dr. Adley will update us on the most current information from the state based on calls with the Department of Education and Health, which continue on a weekly basis. This evening's meeting is not to discuss changes or make changes to district's masking policy. We will continue to work with our local health professionals and follow the governor's mandate to provide safe in-person learning for our students, teacher, and staff. At our last two meetings, the board discussed organizing a letter to state leaders advocating for a state policy or guidelines which outline mitigation strategy that our local health professionals and district administration can use to continue to educate our children safely if and when any of these mandates change. State guidelines worked well for our district for in-person, hybrid, and remote learning decisions last year. The letter that has been circulated is a draft, and the board will work at the board table this evening on the message in that letter and determine next steps. As I've stated, the feedback from parents in our community around this is important and appreciated. So our goal is in-person learning in a safe environment, working with our local health professionals and district administration, following state executive orders and mandates, and looking for safety guidelines and protocols from the state that will guide us this upcoming school year as things change. Thank you again for participating and for all the feedback. We do this as a community, keeping our kids in school safe and healthy. Thank you. So the agenda has public comment and then a public discussion on the reopening of school. So if you want to speak during public comment, that's fine. Public discussion is also gives us the ability to respond or engage in the discussion also. So you don't have to repeat yourself through public comment and public discussion. If you wanted to wait for the public discussion to say what you're going to say, that's fine also. I just wanted to hopefully clarify that for everybody. So thank you. So Michelle, we'll move on to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants' icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comments. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Ms. Makala Atonito, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Makala Atonito, 32 Hillside Avenue. Good evening, Dr. Adley and members of the Board of Education. I have a fifth grader and a third grader at Henley, and I'm speaking on behalf of a group of parents who are concerned that the safety of our elementary students is being sacrificed in an attempt to reopen schools as normally as possible. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, and teachers in schools regardless of vaccination status. Masks are necessary to not only protect our elementary students who are not yet vaccine eligible, but to mitigate transmission of the Delta variant, which we continue to learn more about every day. Safety should be prioritized over convenience. The position taken in your draft letter to the state seeking local control disregards CDC guidance and unduly emphasizes the vaccination rate of the vaccine eligible while ignoring our unvaccinated elementary students. Decisions regarding the health and safety of our children during a pandemic should be informed by medical guidance from epidemiologists, not personal politicized opinions. Contrary to what your letter indicates, requiring masks would be in the best educational and health interests of our students because it will help keep our schools open and safe. The vaccination rate of our elementary students is 0% and the safety protocols in our elementary schools should reflect that. Dr. Adley, I'm reminded of one of your emails from last September where you quoted Maya Angelou in saying, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better." We know better. Last year, the district's mitigation strategies, including eating lunch in classrooms and indoor masking, were effective. They kept our children safe and our schools open. We should not abandon those strategies now while our youngest students remain unvaccinated and unprotected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Atonito.
Ms. Belinda Fang, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is Belinda Fang, 22 Beach Drive. Thank you for having this important discussion regarding masks for the reopening plan. I am in agreement that we should have our children in school as much as possible and as safe as possible so that they can receive the best instruction and learning experience. I'd like to voice my concern regarding the mask-wearing issue that is up for debate. Children under the age of 12 do not have the option of receiving a vaccine at this time. Essentially, nothing has changed for them since this time last year. They're just as likely to contract COVID-19 and the highly contagious Delta variant and spread it to others. I strongly urge you to please make your decisions based on factual data and the recommendations of the CDC and the Connecticut Department of Health. Currently, the CDC advises that schools serving children under the age of 12 implement layered prevention strategies and use them consistently to protect students, teachers, staff, visitors, and other members of their households in support in-person learning. The Connecticut Department of Health advises that all Connecticut residents over the age of two years, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, return to wearing masks when in indoor public spaces. As outlined last week in Dr. Adley's email, it seems as though many of these layered prevention strategies that were effective last year have been taken away, and now even the last mitigation strategy of mask-wearing is being considered optional. I understand that our town rate of infection is low. However, Darien is not insular. We would be remiss to think that we are any less likely to experience the rise of infection than any other areas of the country, especially now with all that we are learning about the highly contagious Delta variant. Our residents will be or have already returned to traveling all over the tri-state area for work, and the families during these summer months have traveled both internationally and domestically. We would be negligent to go against what the store, the state advises about mask-wearing. I implore you to please heed with caution. As many of you have stated time and time again, your role is not in public health. Your responsibility is to follow the advice of experts, and currently they are all recommending that masks be worn indoors for children under the age of 12. Please, please do not deviate from the sound advice and counsel of the CDC and the Connecticut Department of Health. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Fang.
Clayton Irwin, you are recognized and unmuted.
Mr. Irwin, can you hear us? I think your speaker's not on.
You're still muted?
I can hear my kids laughing at me in the other room.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. We can hear you now. Thank you.
Clay Irwin, 210 Leroy. In different circumstances, you're all welcome to stop by sometime if you're in the neighborhood. I appreciate the comments that everybody's made so far. And quickly to Dr. Adley, Board of Directors, and everybody else in the community, I do appreciate our common mission of the protection and preparation of our children. This is something my wife and I talk a lot about, and sometimes we fear that the protection of them today is not preparing them properly for tomorrow. My message is very simple. No question, we should continue to follow CDC guidelines, but in the event that you all, that we are given the option of making a decision of whether to wear a mask or not, I ask the Board of Directors, I ask you, Dr. Adley, that you would allow the parents to make the decision of whether or not this is in the best interest of each child for their individual circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Appreciate that.
Ms. Andrea J., you are unmuted and recognized.
Can you hear us, Andrea?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. If you could just speak up a little bit, we have the air conditioning going on. Thank you.
Okay. I first want to address some of the comments that were just made about the Delta variant. There isn't even a test to determine whether or not that even exists. I'd like to, I'd like those parents that have spoken about that to give that some, put some research into that because there is no test to determine whether or not that that exists. But anyway, the school board, I've already sent this info to all of you, but I'm just sharing this here so that other parents that are listening in can benefit from this information. There's a doctor in Germany. Her name is Margarita Griesbrison. She's an MD and a PhD. She's a world-renowned neurologist, and she has warned that face masks cause oxygen deprivation and permanent neurological damage, especially in the developing brains of children. She explains that the nerve connections in the hippocampus die after just three minutes of oxygen deprivation, never to be restored again, even if you start breathing full oxygen minutes later. So this is brain damage, people. You're okay with that? I would think not. My husband and I both agreed that enough is enough, and we are refusing to mask our children ever again. So I urge anyone who agrees with me to keep your children home this school year, and feel free to contact me if you want to join forces with homeschooling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Archie, would you please repeat your, or say your address?
Andrea, say your address again, please.
Five Old Parish Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jeff Montero, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mr. Montero, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, great. I live at, on Whaling Road, and I want to thank everyone for taking the time and showing an interest in all of our children. I think it's obviously a very important subject. I also want to say that I think the time for mask mandates for students has passed, and strongly believe that it should be left to each family to decide whether masking the kids, their kids in school is the right decision for their family. I believe masking children offers little benefit when you consider how low the risk that it presents to their health, and the risk of them transmitting COVID is low when you consider that there's vaccine readily available to those who want it or at risk. But more importantly, I think for many of our children, it can cause harm. It undoubtedly inhibits their ability to learn and communicate, and in many instances over the past year has been shown to cause anxiety and other more serious issues. The decision to wear a mask should be left up to the families, not a mandate from the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montero. Mr. Montero, could I get the, your number on Whaling Road, please?
19.
Thank you, Mr. Montero.
Greg Grambling, you are unmuted and recognized.
Can you hear us, Mr. Grambling?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. Just if you could please speak up a little bit with the air conditioning. Thank you.
Yep, sure. Thanks. So thanks to the Board of Ed and everyone for taking the time. I know this is a continuing difficult topic for everyone. I just want to make a few comments. You know, for the parents who are insisting on mandatory masking for other people's kids, I would ask if you would be as adamant about your position if Dr. Adley decided to go in the opposite direction. What if he decided that masks are not allowed? Would you be okay with Dr. Adley deciding that your kids can't wear masks? If not, why do you think the reverse is okay? How can you know and prejudge what an individual parent's circumstances are for not wanting their kid, child to wear a mask? My seven-year-old son Hunter developed multiple tics during school last year as a result of having to wear a mask all day, every day. One blinking tic and one as a result of difficulty breathing. This summer, he hasn't worn a mask at all, and the tics are gone. Is it okay for Dr. Adley to make a decision for Hunter, or is that my responsibility as a parent? This summer, my daughter Natalie was in Yale Hospital for a week and diagnosed with bilateral Bell's palsy, which she is now seeing a speech pathologist to learn how to move her mouth again. Should she be required to wear a mask? My older daughter Samantha would like to share her experiences wearing a mask this past year.
Hi, my name is Samantha Grambling. I'm nine years old and go to Ox Ridge. I really don't like having to wear a mask all day. They make it really hard to breathe and really hard to understand my teacher. Whenever I would sneeze, I would have to sit with that gross wet mask all day. It smelled so bad in my mask that I threw up twice into it last year during class.
Luckily, Samantha didn't asphyxiate, asphyxiate or inhale her own vomit. Unfortunately, she was so nervous about riding the bus and being made fun of by other classmates that we had to drive her to school going forward. If I were the Board of Ed or Dr. Adley, I wouldn't be comfortable taking on the responsibility for all of our kids. Governor Lamont and the state have passed this decision to local jurisdictions. I would encourage you to pass the decision on to parents where it rightfully belongs. The one-size-fits-all approach is not appropriate when it comes to our children and inconsiderate for parents who know their kids and their health needs best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grambling, and please thank your daughter for taking some time also. Mr. Grambling, could you just repeat your address again if you're there?
Yeah, 11 Blueberry Lane.
Thank you.
Username Claire, you are unmuted and recognized.
Can you hear us, Claire?
I can. Hold on, let me just turn my camera on.
Sure. And just, just, you could just speak up with the air conditioning in the background. Thank you so much.
I will. I will try to. Claire Raver, 12 Sherri Lane in Darien. I just want to thank the Darien Public Schools for their continued efforts to keep our children safe in school with COVID. Last year was difficult, but nonetheless, my two children, who both attend Ox Ridge, had a terrific year in school regardless of mask-wearing. I listened to Dr. Fauci on Rachel Maddow's show last night, and I listened to him explain about the Delta variant, which is rampant in the COVID infection area. He said that, and a bit bearing in mind, he is the senior health advisor to the President of the United States, and he has many years of training in virology. He said that 34 million people are infect, have been infected with COVID up to May of this year. Within, after May, within six days, a further 1 million people were infected with COVID, and to get to the next 1 million people, it took just eight days. I will say that my two children, my two boys at Ox Ridge, wearing masks throughout the year had no significant side effects from the mask-wearing. My son Wesley has eosinophilic esophagitis and multiple allergies as a part of that chronic disease and suffered no side effects from wearing masks. I also observed that they did not experience any psychological effects from wearing masks in school, either socially or otherwise. The schools have kept our kids safe. We have had minimal, very minimal infection rates at the elementary school level, and I would advocate that we continue to do what we had been doing last year, given that there are rising infection rates across the country. It is only a matter of time until our area in Connecticut, whilst at low infection rate right now, will experience the same infection rate rises, and I would caution the schools to refer and go back to the principles that we had adopted last year until we know it is absolutely safe for our kids to be unmasked in an inside area. I really appreciate the school system. I really appreciate Dr. Adley's efforts and everyone behind the scenes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Claire, could you spell your last name for us for the record, please?
Yeah, my accent doesn't make it easy. R-A-V-E-R. Raver.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Peter McGinnis, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mr. McGinnis, can you hear us? It looks like you're still on mute.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, I can hear you well.
Great. Just your, your, your address, and if you could speak up with the air conditioning, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Of course. It's 22 Robin Hood Lane, Peter McGinnis. First, thank you to all the school administrators, as well as to the volunteers on the Board of Education. You have a difficult task ahead of you and continue to do so. I just want to get to the point of home rule. Home rule meaning the rule that applies in the household as determined by parents. As I think about these various issues, we have masks, we have vaccines, and we have hybrid/remote learning. All three of those things work in a kaleidoscope here of decisions, some of which are certainly the discretion of the Board of Education and the administration, but moreover, some of it has a discretion in terms of parental control. I would suggest that the Board of Education take whatever steps to optimize parental home rule decision-making on all three parameters, such that really the parents are going to decide, depending upon the situations, and in consultation with their own doctors as to whether vaccines are appropriate or not. Secondly, whether masks should or should not be worn. But moreover, on hybrid or remote learning, I also suggest that the flexibility be allowed so that parent, parents can make those decisions to allow their child to engage in remote learning on a more liberalized basis than is currently being contemplated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Ms. Bonnie Malone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi there. Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure. Hi there. My name is Bonnie Malone Fleming, and I live at 11 Sunset Road. I have three little kids, and my young, my oldest will be starting kindergarten at Royal School in the fall. And I, listen, I have three kids screaming upstairs, so I'll make this super short and sweet. I want to reiterate the thanks to the Board of Ed for taking the time to listen to all of us parents. I know this is a serious topic, and there's nothing more important than the generation of kids that we're educating right now. And I appreciate everyone's kind of perspective. I believe in the freedom of our parents' right to choose. And again, I just think that parents should have the option to send their kids to school in the fall with masks or with, without. I would choose to send my kids without. Again, I have three little kids. My oldest is only five, and she'll be in kindergarten, but in preschool, my two-year-old is wearing a mask this year. And I'll have a three-year-old who I, if I, he's wearing a mask, it like really saddens my heart. I know many of his little friends developed social anxiety. My daughter said that it was hard to breathe. I had tantrums before school, and the thought of her sitting all day in kindergarten with a mask, I just think the detrimental kind of impact, developmental impacts of these kids, which we don't, I appreciate the parent who said, you know, I, my kids had a great year and I was happy, but they were fine. We don't know, and actually, there are many leading experts who are saying that masks are more harmful than helpful, and the risk of kids developing serious risks because of COVID. I think that the risk to our children masking them are much stronger, and millions of more children will be impacted if we do that. So I hope that the Board of Ed allows parents to choose if they have that right. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Bonnie Fleming, and I live at 11 Sunset Road in Darien.
Thank you, Mrs. Fleming.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
User CMC, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello, can you hear me?
If you could speak a little louder, yes. If you could just state your full name and address, we appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Kiara Cortez, and I'm at 20 Chestnut Street. I'm here with great, I'm here with great concern for my child and for all children who have no voice to speak up. I'm here representing many parents in the town of Darien who feel the same but are afraid they will be ostracized if they speak out. I'm here to respectfully urge you to unmask mandates in schools and give parents and children a choice. The damage of children's mental health cannot go unnoticed for another school year. The physical, emotional, social, and psychological effects from wearing masks are detrimental to our kids. Did you know that a child's brain cannot develop and function in a learning environment at full capacity while wearing a mask? Masks automatically tell the body that it is not safe, therefore triggering the brain to be in a state of fight or flight and work overtime. The way that the brain normally masters information is off balance, creating distress, impulsive behavior, fear, panic, anxiety, confusion, slower reactivity, loss of critical thinking, lack of comprehension and focus. Masks also decrease oxygen and blood flow, perpetuating a child's fear and driving adrenaline. Additionally, a child's well-being is highly dependent on emotional connection with others, and that becomes difficult in a mask. Many young children are still learning how to signal fear, confusion, happiness, et cetera. One child I spoke to recently said that she was scared for the first month and a half of school because she couldn't differentiate faces and could not remember anyone's name. She also said she was looking to see if anyone was quote-unquote "different", but she couldn't tell. This, I understood to mean that she, that she was trying to gauge who she could trust. It's harder without facial cues. We teach our children about stranger danger, but with everyone wearing a mask, how will they know when something isn't right? Whether they know it consciously or even have a language to understand it, children are suffering. Their speech and reading delayed, disengaged in learning, withdrawn, lack confidence, and have social anxiety. It is no wonder that suicide, depression, and anxiety is at an all-time high. These children are our future. We have to do better for them this year. They need to recover from the trauma of the past 17 months and get back to feeling safe and in control again. They deserve to connect and engage in a nurturing learning environment, show expressions, and be able to focus without fear. I am concerned about what the long-term effects on an entire generation will look like down the road, aren't you? I want my child to be, to grow up to be confident, successful, and secure, and you should want the same. Finally, I don't believe an unregulated cloth mask is the answer to keeping kids safe. They offer a false sense of security. So unless we are talking about N95s, which are sufficient yet aren't, yet aren't made to fit children anyway, please unmask mandates. My child's outcome is my responsibility. And after 18 months of asking lots of questions and looking subjectively at information, I believe it's time to, it's time I decide what is best for my child, and you decide what's best for yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez.
Ms. Carol, Carolina Magui, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. I just want to thank the board as always and the administration for their efforts to do what's right for all our children in town. I know tonight has been mentioned several times the fact that masks for kids can, or kids wearing masks can develop several different issues, and I'm interested in if it's possible, if they have any studies that show that that is the case. Like, for example, I know in Asian countries, they've been wearing masks for many, many, many years, and I haven't heard about kids being, not being able to learn because they're wearing masks, not being able, having mental deficiencies because of it, or any of the other things that they were mentioned tonight. So if there's any studies that can be shared with all of us about those, I will be So if there's any studies that can be shared with all of us about those, I will be very thankful for, to receiving them. Um, and that's it. Thank you. And I do support whatever the administration decides choosing it with our health experts. So thank you.
Ms. Magui, thank you very much.
And do you want my address or you know it?
Yes, no, if you could give it to us. Thank you.
28 Kensington Lane. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Elena Breilowski, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello?
Ms. Breilowski, can you hear us?
Yes. Hello. Thank you. Uh, yes. Good evening and thank you, Dr. Adley.
Name and address, please.
Oh, yes, of course. I'm sorry. Uh, we are at 76 Near Water Lane. And we have three little children. Two of them are Hindley. Yeah, we have a third grader and a first grader and a two-year-old who is going to preschool this year. And I would like to start with thanking you, Dr. Adley and Board of Education for everything you do to keep our community safe. We are all very grateful. Um, I will be very short and I would like to cast my vote. And there is, and just to state that there is mounting evidence that wearing masks prevents the transmission of the virus in schools and on buses, even without physical distancing. Wearing masks is crucial to keeping schools open for in-person learning. Children can transmit the virus. It is factual. So to keep teachers safe, to keep our schools open, I believe unvaccinated children must wear masks. I find it heartbreaking to see our little kids go to school wearing masks most of the time, perhaps not recognizing their faces, but I think it, it is crucial to keeping schools open. I think it is a very small price to pay for keeping schools open. And I think it will be detrimental to their mental health and emotional development and edu, on educational level if schools are closed. So the way I see it, that either we wear masks and keep schools open or schools closed and we just all homeschooling. Not everyone has the chance to be able to homeschool their children for many different reasons. So I don't think it's honestly optional. And so thank you so much for your time. And yeah, that's that.
Ms. Breilowski, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Alicia Melberg, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi. My name is Alicia Melberg, 24, hang on, I'll switch my video. My name is Alicia Melberg, 24 Christie Hill Road. Unfortunately, I didn't prepare for tonight to speak, but after hearing some comments, first of all, I want to thank everybody at the Board of Ed and Dr. Adley for keeping our schools open. This spring, my husband and I had several conversations and his exact comment was it made him sick to his stomach to think what would have happened if our six-year-old was not in school. So we appreciate everybody's efforts. With this, I would like to address several people's comments on the mental impacts of children. They are affected and not having to study. You have parents that are stating that these impacts are real. My child does have some social anxiety issues and they were impacted by this, and I believe they were further impacted by this. So I would like to know how the Board of Education and Dr. Adley would like us to communicate this to our children. For example, this summer, when my kids went to go for ice cream on the last day of school, they asked me why there weren't masks and go for ice cream. How do I explain this to my children? How do I explain to them that the germs don't exist at go for ice cream, but they existed at our schools? I'm not one way or another. I'm saying where I believe the masks should lie, but I believe that it should be our choice and our district's choice in whether we mask our children. I also ask that the Board of Education and the school district address how we are going to identify the mental impacts of this and how we're going to communicate this to our children. Lastly, I recently listened to a Board of Education meeting where a child spoke out. She specifically said, take our mask off. We are not a threat. We are not sick. Is this what we're communicating to our children? Again, I thank everyone for keeping our schools open. I'm one of the most appreciative parents for what everyone has done in this community to keep our children in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Melberg.
User Jackie's iPhone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Jackie, can you hear us? You're on mute. Can you hear us now?
Oh, sorry. Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Just if you'd state your name and address and if you could speak up, we have air conditioning on in the background. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Bill Lenich. I live at 1 Cywinoy Road. Uh, I have a kid going into middle sex and two that are in Tokonik. And I really appreciate you guys opening this forum up. I know it's a difficult thing to do and pretty thankless. But at the same time, I think it's important that we all voice, voice our opinions. And a lot of people in this call have very strong opinions and I think that's fair. But I think what it really boils down to is regardless of what news channel you watch or what studies you read, are you able to, and do you believe you have the right to make your own decision on what's best for your kids? Or do you believe those, this shouldn't, should be made by other people? If masks work, your kid can wear a mask. If vaccines work, you have the right to get a vaccine and a chance to get a vaccine. All teachers have had a chance to get a vaccine as well. So trying to tell other parents how they should raise their children, how they should subject their children to society, I think is a gross overreach. I think everybody should just take a minute and respect other people's rights to make decisions for themselves. And I appreciate you're in a difficult situation, the Board and Dr. Adley, and we appreciate all your efforts last year. But please consider our right to raise our children the way that we think is best. And those people who want to wear masks are free to do so, but people who don't want to wear masks should be free to do so as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lenich.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Anyone in the audience want to speak? Sure. If we have the end table here set up with the microphone, again, just your name and address. Thank you. Excuse me? Yeah. You can speak at the current public comment or you could speak at the open discussion. Sure. Thank you. Sure. Thank you. Could you just make sure that's on so we could hear you?
It is.
It is great. You just speak into it. Thank you so much.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Susan Fivison and I live at 27 Edgerton Street. I have three children attending Royal Elementary School in the fall. I support the proposal by the Board of Education to ask Governor Lamah for local control of our COVID procedures and mitigation strategies. I believe that Darien parents working together with the Board of Ed should have the ultimate say in the health and academic interest of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, Michelle.
We have another raised hand. Do you want to go back to Zoom?
That's fine. Thank you.
User Claire, you are recognized and unmuted.
Claire, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I just wanted to clarify something that I forgot to mention in my comment earlier in that there had been mention of the Delta variant. I learned and I trust again, the senior health advisor to the President of the United States that the Delta variant, as it, as it stands right now, is making breakthrough infections. But the vaccines that people have received so far have stood the test of preventing serious illness in most cases. The virus is mutating and it's changing all the time. And until there is a point at which the majority of people in the United States are vaccinated, the virus will continue to mutate and change. There is a possibility that at some point, the virus will mutate and the vaccines that we have had will no longer be effective against that mutation. We have gone through how, how many? Four different mutations of this virus so far? So I think that the experts are, that are cautioning people to get vaccinated, providing that they are able to get vaccinated is very important. That is a very important point we have to make here. Yes, I'm vaccinated. I was happy to get vaccinated. I think it's really important to stop this virus from changing, mutating and spreading again in this country until there is a level at which enough people in this country are vaccinated. We are facing the fight of our lives. I just want to reiterate that. That was a point I didn't make in my earlier comments. I think this Delta variant is extremely, extremely dangerous. And vaccination, as well as mask-wearing, are the only barriers to this virus that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Are we good, Michelle?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you all. We will move on to board communication and discussion and possible action on the letter. We did, as I mentioned earlier, at the board table, have a conversation around drafting a letter to the state discussing our ability to look at local metrics and have some decision-making if and when any of the mandates change from the governor's office around mask-wearing. I will let the board know that I did touch base with Mr. Mooney on this letter, just ran it by him. And he thought it was a good letter directed to the right people. You know, uh, there were certain things down the bottom. He didn't necessarily feel we had to reiterate in terms of our vaccination rates and different things like that. And he felt that as long as we were working within any state guidelines that were set up, our metrics that were set up and working in conjunction with our local health officials, making those decisions with the district, he thought it was a comfortable letter to send out. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. It does not change. I know some of the questions came up around liability. He did get back to me and say, nothing changes from a liability standpoint at this point in time, based on what we're doing or even sending this letter out, asking for that, you know, local guidance. All right. So I'll open it up for board questions or comments around continuing to look at, make amendments or changes to this letter and ultimately decide if we want to, you know, send the letter on up to the governor and the other folks listed here in the Department of Public Health, the Department of Education, and the epidemiologist at the Department of Public Health. So I'll open it up. Mrs. Ackman.
Short arms. Um, can we just set the stage of where we are? Who drafted this particular letter we're looking at?
Yep. Dr. Adley drafted the letter based on listening to us at the board table from the conversation standpoint.
Okay, so for the benefit of some of the public, because this letter was shared widely last night, created lots of reactions, one way or the other, however you feel about it. This is the first time the board is going through a letter they have not seen or written. So Dr. Adley drafted it, but, but I think there were a lot of feelings that maybe this was a draft and we were finalizing, but we had had input. We've had conversations. Tonight is our working session. Right? Is, that's why it is a special meeting. So we're kind of at step one and I feel like some of the reactions may be feeling strongly where that we are at step five or six and this was done. This is the first time the nine of us or the seven of us, I know we have some members on Zoom, however many of us have gotten to sit. So we're, we're at the initial stage. And that, I think that's probably a good kicking off point because we haven't even as a group had a chance to react to Dr. Adley's words or letters yet, but, but that's where we are right now. So as long as everyone understands in the public where we are, I think we can get to where we need to be. Where I'm hoping.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Yeah, as I stated, it is a draft. Um, the work is done at the board table. I think we've heard from a lot of community members, certainly folks around the board table have expressed their interest in doing what we do best in taking care of the self, safety and health of our children. So that's kind of the origins of the letter. So thank you for those points. I'll open it up to further board conversation. Mr. Sini.
This is the third meeting that we've discussed the letter.
Say that again.
This is the third meeting now that we're discussing the prospects of the letter. It was circulated amongst board members on Wednesday. Um, and part of our board package that was circulated to the community. So I just want to make that clear. I have, I, I thank Dr. Adley for putting out a first draft. I have one change that I'd like to, to, to make.
Sure. Can I, can you hold on just for a second, Mr. Sini? I'd like, do you have someone, Jill, can you take hold of?
It's one word.
Changes that are proposed so we, you know, the draft will continue to develop. Thank you. Thank you. Let me know in your.
And I'll, I can send a.
Yep, that would be helpful too. Go ahead, Mr. Sini. Thank you.
Just in the first, second, third, fourth paragraph, beginning returning to school. In the one, two, third, fourth. Fourth line down, autonomy to boards of education. I'd like the words, boards of education to be changed to district. That's my only change.
Thank you, Mr. Sini.
So I would support that change.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ackman.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to make a broader comment.
Sure.
We've been working off of this document, um, which is the Connecticut Department of Public Health Town Level COVID Response Framework that can be still found on the Connecticut official state website where they have all the coronavirus. If you're not familiar with this, and everybody should, because we went through it numerous times in determining where the, uh, what type of learning we should be in, remote, hybrid, full-time. There's also mask guidance on this, actually. And so I guess, I think why there's so many emotions around this is that there's so much confusion of where we stand. I mean, this document is a current document. And I feel for Dr. Adley every time he comes back and talks about, you know, the confusion that's out there and in the lack of clarity. So I think what this letter, you know, top-down, all we're doing is asking for some clarity. Right now, we're operating under an executive order, which requires masks. So to everybody who wanted to debate mask use, we're going back to school with masks based on the cover, the governor's executive order. But I think what the letter does is kind of highlight what Dr. Adley's been coming back week after week after week and telling us about, you know, the lack of clarity from the state level. And so the question is, you know, after the executive order, do we go back to this where the mask guidance says at our current rate of spread, we don't need masks for students? Or do we have some other rulemaking authority that's going to bind us to decisions? I think that's all this letter is doing. We're not debating mask use, right? We don't have that authority. But we are calling on our state representatives based on our constituents' wishes to give us some sort of framework to, to show us some clarity. I think, I'll, I'll stop one, one more comment. What worked so brilliantly amongst the different models of education was we had this document. So we knew when we were getting close to that 25 per 100,000, we knew which way we were headed as a team. Right now, we have no idea.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sini. Mrs. Ritchie.
So just following up on that, I, as I read the letter, and I agree with Mr. Sini, I think what would be helpful from the state is to have something like that to refer to as we make these decisions. I don't know if the letter clearly addresses that. So I think I would like to somehow make it very specific that we're looking to make sure that that same procedure is then put in place at some point when September 30th comes and the requirement to wear masks goes away. If we're given districts and the health department, the local of our, are given that ability, can we have that same sort of, um, chart, so to speak, that we can refer to? And it might be the chart that's up there right now or it might be a chart that's more specific to masks.
Might be worthwhile, I don't know, to mention or reference that chart that you're referring to, Mr. Sini, that has very specific guidelines on it.
So currently, the FMA, currently the State Department, Department of Public Health have not reissued anything like that. Actually, if we had have followed that exactly, we would never have opened school. It wouldn't be in school. But that being said, uh, there was some discretionary opportunities we had with our health department to make some decisions within that. And that's why we didn't follow that completely. But for the, for now, they have not issued any written guidance on that and certainly have not distributed anything of that nature. They're telling us more to come on it, but about something that is helpful as a consideration.
So the fact it's still on the website, we should just.
Mrs. Ackman.
So I agree with Mr. Sini's points, especially the Backshouldsay administration. And I think what Dr. Adley just said is very important. Last year, we were not held to, we, we were allowed to make decisions locally with our health department. And I feel like if we're going to write a letter to the state, that's what we're saying. We would like to retain that. We would like that very clear for our constituents. We would like to make it clear that it is not a Board of Ed decision. We can't vote on masks or not. I think everyone at this table is very clear. They're like, they're students in 100% of the time. We'd like to do it safely. That's a decision between the medical professionals and administration. Operationally, for the administration, it's really like the, the medical advisors are telling us how to do that. But we did, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but that, that grid that John has, we didn't follow it to the letter of the law. We did retain some local autonomy and able to do it, and in doing that, we kept our schools open. So we're just reiterating in this letter, we would like to continue what we were able to do last year for the benefit of our children. When it comes to masking, I hear the emotion. I sympathize with the emotion. I just don't want people to have the impression that we have the decision-making ability around that particular topic. But I like the idea that, that last year locally, we were able to make decisions and that we, we asked to retain that, that authority.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
Just because I have the document in front of us, remember, these are guidelines. And the language even said, consider more distance learning above. So gave us a broad, we, we didn't have, there was no letter of the law, so to speak. It was, it was very subjective and broadly outlined.
Mrs. Parent.
I was going to say we could add a sentence, just to summarize some of this. Something to the effect of, I think, after, after masks, in that third paragraph, we could say, we appreciated the flex, always, we appreciated the flexibility afforded by the guidelines in, and then I need the name of the document, John, last year, and look for similar guidance from the state. Does that capture Deb?
Could I just say similar guidance and decision-making from the state? I don't know if I'm being repetitive, but I think that's what we're really asking for. We're looking to retain that kind of local decision-making.
Makes sense. If you want to call it like the, the health heat map or something, I'll get the correct, I'll know what that means. I'll get the correct.
I'll give you this.
Thank you.
And it's up on the website still.
Yes.
I have a bunch of grammatical errors, like this is not in that.
Does that have something to do with teacher in you?
It may very well. I enjoy it as a.
Can you take that offline perhaps?
Yeah. I mean, do you want me to, I don't know, I mean, this is our work session. I don't know.
I think you could send us some of the grammar.
Okay.
And that's something that we'll focus on and.
It's not.
I retain the right to disagree, just for the record, okay?
It's, it's not substantially, substantially changing anything.
No, I appreciate.
Okay.
I'm glad you're. Anyone else? Mr. Brown, I know you're, you're joining us from your, you're educating yourself this summer out in, out in the University of Chicago. Appreciate you zooming in. I just want to make sure you have any thoughts or comments to add.
I appreciate that. Glad to hear from home. I want to say thank you to Dr. Adley for drafting the letter. I appreciate that. The question, where we are legally, I know this is a question we've gone back and forth a number of times over the past year in terms of where the decision lies. I think it's very important that we allow the decision-making to happen locally. Perhaps even as local as in the house of every parent in town. And I think that this letter is a start to get us in that direction. I think that the change Mr. Sini suggested, I would agree with. Otherwise, my only comment is I don't want to let perfect grammar be the enemy of good grammar. And it's incumbent on us to get this letter up to the State House as soon as possible, so we can get some clarity for our students, for our parents, and be able to move forward issuing guidance as fast as we're able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, Mrs. Ritchie.
Paragraph four, I think, is redundant. I don't know if it's necessary. I don't know what other people think about that particular paragraph, but I feel like it's been, it was mentioned in the above paragraph. I, I don't think it's unnecessary. I think it just adds, adds more verbiage.
So I do have, I, I agree with that. I have that highlighted, and that was a comment from Mr. Mooney also.
That's the, given the high vaccination rate.
Paragraph, yes.
Yeah, we strike that.
Yep. The other question, Mr. Mooney did say he felt we had all the right people here in terms of who directed to. I don't know if there's any other thoughts or anyone else that people think it should be directed to, or if we should copy some of our other local politicians and representatives.
I don't think it ever hurts to copy people. I don't think they have the, I think it's really been SDE and the governor. So we may want to copy them so they're aware of our position, should it come to them. I don't think that hurts, but I think who we're addressing it to at the moment are the actual decision makers on this.
Yep.
I would agree. Why don't we just see all the.
Perfect. Makes sense. Thank you. Any other thoughts, comments? Dennis, you good?
I'm all, I'm all in favor of this. I think Mr. Brown summarized it quite well. It should be local control, and if it goes, to me, this is a step to this point, if it goes to local house control, local home control. But I think, and Mrs. Akman's point is, I think it's just trying to continue what we had last year to be able to run our district the best way we can try to do that as possible.
Yeah. I think with the goal always being, and many people over the last several weeks in the summer with this conversation have said, you guys did an incredible job keeping people, everyone did an incredible job, parents, students, teachers, keeping kids in school. That should be the primary focus, and staying focused on that for their education. And then, you know, working on what worked best last year in terms of working with the health departments and having those guidelines and having some autonomy, and like that word, Mrs. Akman, to make those decisions locally to keep people, to keep our students in school. Good. Dr. Adley, anything to add?
No, I, I'm, I, can I take away if I make the general consensus of those changes that we get it off SAP? Or do you want to see?
Yeah, we'll take a, take a consensus of the board, and then we won't send anything till everyone reviews it and confirm with everyone that we're, we're comfortable with the updated draft.
Send out a final draft, so we can just take a quick look. So here's, well.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Akman.
Welcome to the conundrum. However, you can do it the way it is, is currently sits. You can write a final draft. The board could choose to vote or not vote based on the changes, but the letter is currently signed by the chairman of the Board of Ed and the superintendent. So you could finalize the draft and send without a vote.
Okay.
I would suggest, as we've lived through this before, make sure the rest of the board members are comfortable with that.
Yes.
But I think we've all discussed edits. I don't know if it's Mr. McCammon doing it or Dr. Adley. I trust them both to do it, and as long as there are those edits circulate, and I think you can both send off.
Good.
I would make sure your board members agree with that, just in case.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Mr. Brown, anything that your, your face is now in front of me along with the skyline of Chicago?
Lucky you. No, I think we're in a great spot. I encourage any cleanup edits that need to be made. But I, at this point, I think this is great work. Thank you all, and I'd love to see this get up to Hartford as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So I will do this. May I have a motion to accept the proposed Joint Board of Education Superintendent Communication as amended and to send it as addressed to the appropriate state officials with copies to our local state representatives? Mrs. Akman, second by Mr. Sini. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. All right. Thank you all for that discussion. Thank you all for taking the time to look through this and work through it. I think it speaks to the board's thoughts, the administrations in our community. And thank you, everyone, from a public standpoint, for the ongoing feedback around this. Good. So now, Dr. Adley, we will move back to public discussion on the reopening of school.
Well, this, this is a public discussion. If anybody has any other comments to make, I'm happy to respond to those or answer any questions that the board has as a matter of presentation from my behalf. So.
Okay. We'll start with the board and see if anyone has any questions or comments around general thoughts around reopening, which you updated the last time.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Cameron. I probably just should say that, just update the board from this morning's meeting.
Yes.
With the Connecticut State Department of Education and the Public Health. At that meeting, the Department of Public Health reiterated, actually, this is the first time that they've really said that our children are to go back to school and our staffs will go back to school vaccinated or unvaccinated with masks, at least until September 30th, at which point, or before which point, other, other executive orders take place. So that is the latest information that we have to go on. So that's what we will be doing. I've had the meeting with our health professionals, who support that, as you might expect in this case. So that's, that's the latest information. There's no written information that have been provided just yet. They are putting hopefully some guidance like that, Mr. Sini, together, and other guidance to reiterate what they said today. But the bottom line is, it was a decision today to say, you're required to follow the Department of Public Health mandate that is, or a requirement that is in that executive order until September 30th. So towards the end of this week, that's the communication that I will send out to our, our families to reiterate that expectation and plan.
Thank you, Dr. Adley, for that update. Mr. Sini.
Can we, in the spirit of conversation, just address some of the things that came up related to the lunchroom?
Sure.
Are you expecting a normal lunch?
So we're, as I said, we were expecting a normal lunch, particularly middle school, high school. Their, their students are vaccinated. The guidance that we have been given is to really consider the impact, the cost benefit of some of the instructional programs that got like removed and so on and so forth. So for the most part, at the high school and the middle school, we'll be doing a normal lunch. We may spread out, right? The lunches will be certainly, there'll be no box lunch type thing. You'll have to go through the line. If we decide to utilize the gym next door, that's, that's up for discussion. I will say that, that we are in a position now that we weren't in six weeks ago again, unfortunately. And we're probably closer to opening up more in line with how we closed than a full reopening in terms of no mitigation strategy, so on and so forth, right? So that's kind of like a change that has sort of happened, given, given the cases and given the metrics that are in place at the moment, and how they're being interpreted by our public health officials. So the one area that we discussed length today with our medical advisors is that I put back on the table the lunch, the lunches for the younger children. And what we're going to try and do there is to ensure that they're at least three feet apart with their, with their mask. Now, obviously, they don't have the mask on whenever they're not eating, but they are comfortable with that within the guidelines that have been provided. So that is what we're working on to try and ensure we can, we can accomplish that. And we will accomplish that.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Mrs. Akman.
So this is part of next, the next discussion and this discussion. But it's one of the measures of our goals, the development and implementation of a comprehensive safe plan for return to school. School's coming. When would we expect that kind of plan?
Well, the, the plan currently exists on the website right now and has been communicated to everybody. We will be updating with these changes that I'm, are pricing the board off. So they will be updated in real time and communicated both to the board members and the members of the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Then I think as, as close as we are, an update at the next board meeting before school opens, in terms of your normal reopening.
I would say that would be minimal, yes.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Mrs. McCammon.
Dr. Adley, was there an update on remote learning?
The, the remote learning update is that it will be in place and defined by the Board of Education, the State Board of Education for the fall of 2022. Guidelines will be put together in January of 2022. I know it doesn't make sense, but they have cool remote learning off the table. Well, let me make sure I'm clear, but the, the pull of remote learning off is an option, except for in certain cases, which may be related to PPTs, 504s, or other mitigating circumstances, but it's not a general option for the public. It is also not to be counted as school days for snow days, so they just, they just took that off the table completely. I think that the, the general consensus is which we've all, which we all know, in-person learning is better than, than remote learning. So whether you consider they've gone too far or not, but essentially, they're not to be counted for the 180 days. They are, remote learning is to be considered for, if you want to do it, for students who have to be quarantined. And it's my recommendation, and I've communicated in the plan that we will do that. I, I think providing anything else less than that, our, our community has come to expect a high quality of in, in, or sorry, remote learning when that is necessary. But that's really at, for the most part, that the board, or sorry, the district's direction, that you have to go out for quarantine, they're going to provide you with the remote learning. So it's, it's not an option for people to do. It's coming off the snow days. It can't be counted towards the 180 days, except if you are being quarantined and we're providing the remote learning option.
So is there, as we go forward over the next couple of weeks, I'm thinking of all the work that might have to be done to prepare classes or teachers, is there something in place? I'm looking at you, Mrs. Klein, around PPTs and 504s, that we're getting ahead of that to prepare for knowing, like, what is that, what does that student size look like that we may have to be? I hope that's not your answer. What? Do we know, do we have any idea, and we may not write this second, but you may be working on the population that we may need to be doing remote learning for?
Mrs. Akman, isn't it?
Yes, thank you.
We don't have families that have reached out, and there are some families that did opt out, that opted out that required that for medical reasons and for reasons for their students. Right now, we don't have requests for remote learning, but we are in touch with families who do have children who have high needs on ongoing dialogue.
Okay.
This date, we don't have.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Maroni.
Is there any update on the quarantine policy, vaccinated or unvaccinated?
So if, if you are vaccinated, you do not need to, asymptomatic, you do not need to quarantine? So that's, that's the message here to, the more we have people quarantined, both staff members and also students, the better. So that, and we do. Sorry, vaccinated, thank you. Vaccinated, yes, the better, because there are more opportunity then to contain the continuity of learning and actually in person. I should have said that as of today, we have been looking at whether to do testing for students and, and jump on board. The state is offering the ability to do that. In consultation with the, the health professional today, we decided that we would, we would do that. And we provide free testing for our elementary students, who obviously are unvaccinated. This is voluntary. This is not something that's required. It's, it's a voluntary participation. And the, the same for any unvaccinated staff to go on a weekly basis to be tested. That's at the expense of the State Department of Education. They will set it up with us in consultation with our health professionals and our, our nursing staff, and I see Alicia here. Nice to see you, Alicia. So we will be communicating that, that that will be an option for parents of, of our youngest students, and it's also for staff who may not be vaccinated.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Mrs. Akman.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify, just so everyone's clear on that? The article on that I saw that testing would be available for elementary students, so K through eight? Like, how are we defining that? How does the state?
I believe it's K through six, Alicia. Is it K through six? I think it's K through six.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I believe it's K through six.
The testing for the.
Elementary.
Elementary.
Yep. There's a meeting on Thursday that I'm going to listen in on and find out more about it.
So we can just let parents know very clearly? And then it's for all unvaccinated teachers, regardless of level? Or is it only through K through six?
Oh, it's all unvaccinated teachers. But priority districts would then, if it applied to a priority district, if you wanted to do the students at, at the high school level. So we're not a priority district, so we can't do, cut, offer that. But most of our students, at least about, about 87% of them are vaccinated that we know about.
And do we know our percentage of vaccinated teachers?
Minimally, there's, minimally about 75, minimally.
And just, just to clarify, when we say teachers, we mean staff?
Staff, yes.
Because there's other folks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Parent.
And a lot of my questions were already asked, but is, back to the quarantining, I'm thinking more of an elementary student. If an elementary student is positive, we're still quarantining the entire classroom?
So the cohort, you're not, you're not required to do any cohort in some of the stuff that we're going to try and do, which is also, has a wee bit to the cafeteria. For the most part, we're trying to encourage people within a week. Most people's, most children sit beside the same children, at least for that period of time. And we may actually encourage that, require that to some degree, at least for a wee week, a week at a time, so that if someone has to be quarantined, we're not sending the whole cafeteria out or the whole class out. The elementary, it's okay saying that you won't quarantine a whole elementary classroom, but if we're trying to. that you won't quarantine a whole elementary classroom, but if we're trying to push back into some of the instructional practices, which would have kids a wee bit closer to each other. If we can do the fifteen minutes within the twenty-four hours, we'll try and do that. That's just very hard to manage and very hard to clarify. If a teacher is able enough to, to say, hey, no, that definitely didn't, we didn't cross the fifteen minutes and so on, then great, we won't do that. But if it, if it's, I, I really don't want to compromise, it's, it's fine balance between instructional practices and health. So we're trying to sort of, it's not a perfect system there. I would not rule out whole classes having to quarantine again, just depending on, on the nature, we're trying that. But I also want to go back to some level of, of of, of different learning styles that, that the kids are used to.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Mrs. Parent.
Can I just confirm what you said about the snow days, because I know a lot of people were excited about the idea that snow days would, remote snow days would count, so that's, that's off the table, so there's.
Just when I thought I cracked it, let's move on guys. I'll probably have to like take some action here because it's on a calendar to some degree, right? So, no, that, that we cannot do that anymore, so you'll get all the snow days back to our students. Your wish is come true and last year, they, they petitioned to do this and give us guidelines and so on and so forth, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
So just back to the quarantining again, so doesn't that mean then our, our classrooms all need to be set up the same way they were last school year to ensure that if someone is quarantined, that they can access remote learning? And do in that, I'm guessing we'll have it set up in that same period of time that we did last year, so that if someone is out because they're quarantining or they're tested positive and they're unvaccinated, that we will be able to transition them to remote learning very quickly so that they don't miss out on instructional time?
So we're certainly have advanced in the sense of what we've got ready, right, in terms of class seating list and so on and so forth, but I will say that the students are doing labs, right? We're not, not having students do labs this year. That's a cost benefit thing. That's a judgment. That's a level of a judgment there, but those types of things, I think we, I think they're important to try to continue, but if you have a lab team, we'll try and confine that as best as we, as we possibly can. So there will, there will be, there will be the sort of like class list and class layouts on, on, they'll be readily available, it'll be a better position to do that. The readiness for, for being, the order of remote learning will still be, give the teacher the twenty-four hours to get ready for that. Obviously, we still, we still need to do that because I can bring from one, most teachers really try their best to get it up as quickly as possible. It was difficult last year when you've got people coming for all sorts of reasons. It's definitely impossible to keep up with it. This, I think, and hopefully we'll be in a better position because it will be less, and I know the teachers will do their best to get it up, but reasonably, because you could be talking about one person, one student getting ready or twenty-four students getting ready with interventions and all sorts of things to do. So we'll do, do the best to get that up, but we'll have to give the teachers at least the twenty-four period to get that, get it up and running.
Mr. Maroney.
Going back to, to local control, in quarantine, is it, is it our control of whether we quarantine a, a class or, or just an individual student? The question I'm asking is something Mr. Brown brought up multiple times last year, of how many students who were quarantined eventually became sick, which the number was less than five. So to me, if we're erring on, if, if our goal is to have students in class, can we err on the side of not quarantining students? And see how that plays out if we have, especially if we have masks on, that that would hopefully mitigate the transmission of the virus?
So the Department of Public Health have issued the directive around the three foot sort of, for, for a better term, the three foot sort of radius. So that's, we kind of have to work with that, but we do have some flexibility that we'll be looking to see if we, if we can exercise whether it's, it's that circle or it's a whole class or somewhere in between. I understand, I understand the question, Mr. Maroney. But there are, there, there are recommendations and requirements that we, the three foot requirement that we have to work with. But I think our health professionals, I have to give a lot of credit to Alicia, David and Dr. Kenneth Fack for really working within the flexibility that they had last year, and I know that we'll continue to do that where it makes sense from a health and safety point of view to do, to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Mr. Senior.
Just one last part of the discussion, a number of times, the psychological health of our students came up in some of the public comments. And it wouldn't be possible, you know, we often had our physical health experts come in and speak to us, but maybe the head psychologist or child psychologist expert that you're using to, to come in and just brief the, the board and the community about, you know, some of the challenges that they're seeing as a result of some of the mitigation factors in the virus at a future meeting.
I can take into consideration whether the board would like, like, like us to do that. We are reaching out through our sort of web of care to particularly, we had a lot, most of our kids were in school most of the year. Particularly to students, families who have not been in school, to make sure that they receive the transition that they need to receive, and if there's any other intervention that they need to receive, we're doing that on a one-to-one basis. I tend to find them personally before school and that process has started.
Mrs. Akin.
Good, for the board's consideration, could I broaden that request in that maybe we have psychologists in our schools and we've added psychologists? And we've invested in that, maybe what, maybe my request would be for the board to consider is bringing in our school psychologists and saying, what are they seeing in school? What is their caseload look like? Has their caseload or their issues changed pre or post COVID? And some of that might be masking, some of that just might be a result of social, social isolation or or different stressors at home, but maybe it might be good this coming school year to get an update from our school psychologists. And also as part of our investment in them, and we're adding a school psychologist the year and understanding their need, their workload and what they're seeing on a daily basis.
I think they're good points. There's also in the plan adding reading interventions, different things like that. So I think the sense I'm getting from the board is we'd like kind of an update and have those folks attend the meeting. We can discuss, might not be the next meeting, we might want to see school open and you'll get, you'll get a lot of.
Sure.
Back, you know, once school's open, so.
In due course.
Yeah, good. All right, thank you. Great. Mrs. McCammon.
I'll just agree. Wonderful, I look forward to that. Is there any update on extracurriculars, whether it's theater or chorus or sports that anybody needs to know at this stage?
So, so the update on extracurriculars is that we are moving forward with offering. I'm trying hard to think of one that we're not offering at this point, it's not coming to me, so we're, we're trying to offer at least a preponderance of them. Music, the performing arts will still have a little bit of an expectation from the Department of Public Health about distancing, right? Which you can have a different opinion on, but that, that's kind of, they still see the choral and program as. Well, maybe, maybe some of the wind instruments that they project and so on and so forth, droplets. So we'll, we'll continue, we'll continue doing some of those outside where we can. Actually, there were a lot of things that we, that we did last year outside that we learned was actually better outside and perhaps just as well received by parents and staff and students, so we'll, we'll continue, continue to work with that. We found a way even in the summer there to, to pull off Wizard of the, Wizard of Oz and with, you know, see-through masks and it was phenomenal. So the, the kids and the staff will, will work through that, but that's, that, the music one is still relatively in place with some restrictions on it.
I would ask too, that if there's any needs around outdoor space, tenting or tables or chairs, I think the students really appreciated all that. So I think we would all be supportive of whatever those needs are as we go into the fall. It's a, a nice time to be outside. Any other board questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Yeah, no, I want to finish up with the board. Mr. Senior's on that. Good. Yeah, yeah, no, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Senior. So Michelle, we'll start with folks that are in the room and please, if you want to step up to the mic, thank you. Just your name and address and if you can speak as loud as possible with our, with our air conditioning, thank you.
How's that? Joanna Walsh, Seventeen Pleasant Street. I am co-chair of CDSP this year along with Lori Olson, who I believe is zooming in. And there's been a lot of comment tonight and a lot of emotion around masking and unmasking. And in our roles as co-chairs of CDSP, we have heard from many, many, many parents in the community regarding all these reopening plans. And the comments are unanimous to us that parents overwhelmingly want their children to be in school in person. And as a result of that, we believe the school should follow whatever guidance public health officials give that will keep our kids in school in person for the year and avoid as much as possible any risk of quarantines and shutdowns. Darien was very successful last year. We kept our kids in the classroom as much as we could, more so than most of the country and even some surrounding areas. And we did that by following local public health official. We are very excited for this year. We're very excited that Dr. Adley and his administration are trying to have a school year as close to normal as possible, like he just mentioned. That means meetings on carpets, in small groups, pumpkin carnivals. It means middle schoolers get to actually walk around in between classes instead of the teachers changing classrooms. And all these things, and it also means return of after-school activities, field trips, everything that's been missing for the last eighteen months. So if the experts say that we have to do it in masks, let's do it in masks so we can actually do it. We believe everyone in this debate is well-intentioned. We all want the same things. We want our children to be in school and to be healthy. We are all incredibly frustrated that this pandemic has extended as long as it has. So we need our school officials to remain steadfast and listen to the public health experts. Their appropriate risk-based mitigation steps have the best chance to keep our kids in the classrooms for the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh, and thank you, Mrs. Olson, for zooming in on vacation. Next in the audience.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Chris Wajilla from Forest Stanton Road, and I am with the group Unmask Our Kids Darien. Throughout the pandemic, parents and our children have been at the mercy of scientists, politicians, industry and teachers unions with respect to COVID mitigation measures. Our children's needs have often taken a backseat to the metrics of local case counts and hospitalizations. It's time that we have a seat at the decision-making table. We applaud the school district's letter to Governor Lamont requesting local control of masking decisions. But we are going around and around in circles on this issue. Cloth face masks are not considered personal protective equipment or PPE according to OSHA standards. In fact, the proper protection for a particulate the size of SARS-CoV-2 is an N95 or higher respirator. If the goal is to prevent the spread of SARS-CoV-2, are you prepared to require N95 masks for all teachers and children? It is often argued that what masks are not worn to protect the wearer but to protect others. Wearing a face mask is a reasonable thing to do as long as in doing so, it does not harm the wearer, but that is not the case. The potential physiological effects of mask wearing include hypoxemia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath and inhalation of microbial contaminants on the surface of face masks. Psychological effects can include fear, mood swings, fatigue and compromised cognitive performance. Dr. Adley and board members, we request that you ask the health professionals that counsel you if they have the relevant studies that prove that long-term mask wearing for seven plus hours a day, five days per week, one hundred eighty days per year is safe for our children? And can they guarantee that our children will not be harmed by long-term mask wearing? The fact is, they cannot provide those assurances because those studies and children have not been done. And for that reason, masking must be at the discretion of parents and without coercion. I'd like to end with an important quote from a recent interview with Carl Henigan, a professor of evidence-based medicine at the Center for Evidence-Based Medicine at Oxford University. In response to the question, is there any evidence that face masks are keeping our children and our teachers safe? He responds, quote, "No, there isn't any evidence that masks in school reduce the uncertainty of whether they work or not." What I would say to people is in the absence of evidence, if you think they should be wearing them, go and talk to some children. I can tell you they hate them. They find it really difficult. They don't hear, adhere to the guidelines. So for instance, they go in their pocket and they pull them out. That's a dangerous issue with co-infections. I think the government should start to look calmly at the data and say, where is the evidence for what we do? And if it's lacking, then you have to err on the side of not intervening. The just-in-case approach is not the way to perform in healthcare," end quote. We must use the precautionary. Yep, I'm finishing up. We must use the precautionary principle with respect to masking children. You cannot in good conscience require an intervention that can potentially harm in order to protect others. We are the parents, excuse me, we the parents should decide whether to mask our children or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wajilla. Anyone else from the audience? Thank you. Michelle?
If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. The facilitator will identify you. Please state your name and address. You will have with three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, we'll have public comment at the end again also. Just give it a second to make sure. We're good? Michelle?
Yes.
No hands?
No hands.
Okay. Thank you all in the audience and thank you all again for those participating in Zoom. We will move on to our discussion in action on proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two district goals. Dr. Adley.
So members of the board, at the last meeting, we distributed the strategic work and the measures to go along with the goals. At that time, the board discussed, could we split out the teaching and learning? And so we have done that to result in seven goals instead of the six. I would say that, you know, the, the board's decision as to how many you want and are the ones that you don't want, you could, at, at one level, you could do goal one, goal three and goal five and because I think a goal two for the most part is, is potentially contained in the strategic plan. But that being said, we'll split it out and they're there for your consideration and discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I will open it up to board comments and questions.
Do you want to go through by each goal or how do you want to?
Yeah, if you, Dr. Adley, do you want to do that and just give a quick update?
Do that. I, I will be very, very brief. You have had it so.
Go ahead, Mrs. McCammon.
I think maybe before we jump in, we should talk for a second about the fact that this document's a little different than a traditional goals and objectives document. It's really more focused on the Board of Education and what the Board of Education would be doing as it goes through its year, vis a vis its interaction with administration. So I think that's an important change. We've really moved our traditional goals and objectives to the strategic plan. And so I, I just think that it's important to start there because it's a little bit of a, a change in, in process. I, I support it. For the record, I like the fact that we've articulated what the board's focusing on this year, and I think that we have already voted on the strategic plan. So I believe that we have articulated what the administration will be doing. I'm, I'm happy, you know, if the board wants to discuss how to look at what's inside of the strategic plan or how to look at anything that might fall below that level. But that's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon.
So before we go one by one.
Yeah, yeah, Mrs. Akin.
Sorry, and I know I spoke with you about this, Mr. Denise, I agree with Mrs. McCammon, this is a real change from how we look at district goals. And I think some of it's really good in that we have some goals for the board as well. It kind of helps keep us focused, but we really moved away also from kind of what's our work plan and, and expectation, I'm sorry, expectation of the district on an annual basis. And some of that I would agree is in the strategic plan, but I worry straying too far from that because the strategic plan only takes us so far. So right when, when that ends, then are we going back to enumerating annual district plan and work, work plan and expectations? They feel in general, and I say this respectfully a little light, things like continuity of meetings, well, we've already approved our meeting schedule, so we have continuity of meetings, check. We've accomplished part of the goal. I mean, I'm missing a little bit of substance and maybe as we get down into the curriculum one, we can talk more, but. But I'm missing a little bit of what Mrs. Stein referenced last meeting, kind of our rigor and work plan to kind of true up back to as things come up throughout the year. And say, what were our annual expectations? Maybe we can pull a little more of it out of the strategic plan. But I do think from a mapping standpoint, this is a significant change from how we typically do it.
So certainly, so certainly over the last couple of years, it's changed from, definitely changed from, because what it used to be was relatively, I'll call it departmental in nature. And where that was delineated, which is, which is fine as a way of doing it. This tries to recognize, albeit maybe a bit late or otherwise, but it tries to recognize what the district priorities are and what the board's priorities are to get accomplished. Also with, with also the strategic plan, not to overload everybody and be redundant with some stuff. And then, as you say, included some self reflection goals, performance as a board. So you are right in the way you're describing it. I'm happy to. Reflect accordingly or listen to recommendations as to how the board might want to proceed. It certainly may be something that we do also. Early in the summer or part of that retreat as to how we want to proceed with the goals moving forward. That may be worthwhile discussion to have as opposed to just proceeding.
Go ahead, Mr. Seeny.
I mean, I'm happy to embrace change here, given so much time was put into the strategic plan. So I appreciate what we're trying to do, separate the strategic plan and the board's goals and objectives and, you know. Basically marry them at some point as we check in. But I guess to the question that comes up. When we reach the goals of the strategic plan, we would then go and update the strategic plan, I'm assuming, right?
Well, I would consider the strategic plan a living document. As it's written, yes, the big goals. Some of the strategies might change given circumstances or different decisions that are made. So that will be a living document. I don't expect, honestly, I don't expect every year to have necessarily the strategic plan on this.
So I would thank Mr. Seeny. I would add just to follow up. Is it a goal? I think I like. The cadence of reviewing the goals and objectives and seeing the progress. I did like seeing from a departmental standpoint, I think of some things Mr. Rudel has brought up over the years that he is looking for or may need. So I don't want to lose that ability to make sure we're capturing, you know, something like that. I think in something like this is the goal to add a column. You've got the measures, but they're in a column that updates kind of where we are on some of this stuff on a regular basis.
So unless the board wanted different feedback or different. Sort of timing wise, I would do what was done last year, which is come back with the regular fall, winter, and spring updates.
I'll go to Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs. Ritchie?
Maybe you could just clarify for me, because I don't, it's not clear to me how this ties into our master agenda. And it's usually our goals and objectives set our master agenda and lays that out very clearly. So maybe you could just briefly touch on that, how you see this set of goals and objectives tying into our master agenda.
So the master agenda would certainly have those time periods where the feedback has to be, has to come back. So that is on the master agenda. There are things about student achievement and reporting back. They're all curriculum updates. They're all suggested beyond, they will be on the master. If they're not already, they'll be on the master agenda.
Go ahead, Mrs. McCann.
But from a, I think the strategic plan really in some ways, there's an update on the strategic plan, but the strategic plan should set up your work for the year.
Yes, correct.
That should really inform the master agenda insofar as as work is completed or hits certain milestones. It should appear at the board as appropriate. So I would think we would see three different kinds of update. There's work that gets completed or brought to us for further review based on its timing and the strategic plan. There's a review of the strategic plan at whatever increments we've determined. And then there's this, which again is more board level work and. Defines how the administration works with the board.
So maybe the, go ahead, Mrs. Akman.
So I think that's really what we need to tease out if we're, because what these have always been is the Board of Education's district goals. And so it's the board saying to the district, these are the goals we want you to hit this year. This year, I do like and appreciate that we actually have some board goals for ourselves, which helps us evaluate us at the end of the year. How did we do on that? And that's probably been lacking in the past. So I'm actually happy, and I think we talked about that at our retreat, to incorporate those. But what's missing for me is the charge to the board. That these are what, or the charge of the boards, the district, this is what we'd like you to accomplish this year. The strategic plan is and should be high level. We'd like you to, I don't have it in front of me, we'd like you to move curriculum forward, right? But in the past, we've seen things like we are going to implement Math and Focus K through five. That's the granularity we don't have in these. Now, I think that at times our goals got too granular, right? Like, I don't know that I need to know that Mr. Rudle counted all the pennies in stacks of ten, right? I mean, that's too granular. But I would like to know as a district. What we're accomplishing within the framework or as a board, what we're asking the district to accomplish within the framework of the strategic plan. Those would be the annual year to year goals that I would looking, and my guess is we could tease them out from here. But I think we need a little more specificity, and then we also need to recognize that it's nice to have some work for the board to stay focused on. But there's two different things, and I think this document focuses very much, as Mrs. McCann points out, on the board's goals for itself and not the board's goals for the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
Just a, I see that as, like, I'm just trying to look at it as a board governance, governance responsibility and to. To make sure that you do have that responsibility and oversight and so on. I think I'd be, we'd be listening quite a lot here if I take our strategic plan and take all the year ones out of it. And put, I'm just, I mean, it'd just be a lot in here, so. I'm happy to lenient further, but.
I'll let you take a try.
So I think basically underneath the strategic plan, you're going to have some sort of work plan for the district, right? And it's multiple years.
Yes, correct, yes.
So I think really what the board is looking to understand is what is year one of the strategic plan? And how do we talk about that as we progress through the year? So I think we are, again, we are almost two different things. When, or even if we go to. Goal three. The oversee the implementation of the district's strategic plan. That is probably one of the biggest things that we would be doing this year. What does that look like? And so what kind of deliverables would we be seeing so that we understand that the district is actually progressing through the strategic plan in an appropriate way?
So just like, just a couple of examples off the top of my head, not that I'm going to list them here, but you'd be talking about things like developing the learning principle, developing the DEI groups. So all of those types of things under each of those, each of the goal headings would be listed here.
So I think maybe what you would do then, are you going to bring us, is your plan to bring us the strategic plan at, for example, at a quarterly piece? Or are you planning to pull things out? I think back to Ms. Ritchie's question about how does it inform the agenda?
Well, certainly, certainly the regular three times the falls, the winter and the spring, if the board feels, we would like to do that like on a more of a quarterly basis, right? That's okay too. I mean, I can.
Whatever.
But I, but I think to the, to the comments, I think to what Mrs. McCann, you just said in a little. More definition, Mrs. Akman, like you just mentioned some of the stuff under the district's strategic plan and to guide policy and decision making. So I think, you know, as we get those updates, defining a little more the specifics within the strategic plan that are occurring. In the first six months of the first year and then projects, issues, the course any dollars or cents that are going to come up around budget time and stuff like that. So I just think a little more insight into that in terms of the plan. Go ahead, Mr. Seeny.
I mean, I'm looking at the strategic work. It's to provide governance support for year one strategies. I'm sure in the plan, there's year one strategies outlined, right? So why wouldn't we have that document next to this one and go down that checklist?
Yeah, I just, I.
Really lost why this.
No, 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 I just, I think some of it is just, you know, we were, what we saw in the progress, we were able to see and talk to them, it's just a change. So I just think something like that, ticking and tying it together in terms of the strategic plan and our goals and, you know, helping us with the update.
That, I mean, I think we got to go through one of these. Alan will do a good job of showing the document that's guiding him on the strategic plan, and we can tick and tie to this goal.
Yeah, but I think we should get this into the board if there's anything else we want to add. You know, as you go forward and prepare to present an update to us, Mrs. Parent, Mrs. Parent?
So I'm just looking at goal two, and to Mrs. Akman's point about specificity. To advance curriculum across content areas and grade levels and monitor levels of performance of student achievement, that's education every single day, all day. So is, I would love to know, is there a particular focus? Is there a particular grade level that you're, maybe you're focusing on middle school, English, or whatever? Is there something that is the focus of the district this year that in our role as governance, like, how do we make sure that we know what you're working on?
Yeah, next question.
Generally speaking, I tried to use language that was larger than what's in the strategic plan. Because the strategic plan had specific deliverables and that's goal area one.
Right.
Not to be confusing. But we had a specific goal to update the template for curriculum. And that's a deliverable that would drive how we're writing curriculum. And that's the next level above that would be advancing curriculum. So that's the thinking that goes behind it. But as far as is there a new instructional focus? There's not a new instructional focus because we want to define what our teaching principles are before we define an instructional focus. And that's also part of the goal one. But are we doing new things? Absolutely. So Math and Focus is still in its infancy. And grade five did not have a traditional rollout. So all of our professional development that we would have associated with year one of fifth grade Math and Focus is happening this year. But that was more fine grained than I thought you would want to be. But that's certainly, those are the types of things that can be there. I know that the high school English department has a focus on writing. But if I go every department again, it's, it's a goal by department potentially. So the grain size is what I'm.
Go ahead, Mrs. Akman.
So I think what I'm struggling with as a board at the end of the year, when we, we have actually a framework to evaluate our goals. What I don't have a framework for right now, when I see things, and remember the board added this goal last meeting, things like annual, the measure is an annual presentation of curriculum updates and student achievement data. In anything, in any area of curriculum, are we, are in some areas at every level, at any level? So I know you went broader. I think generally we were looking, or I should speak for myself, as a strategic plan is kind of the broad goal. The year to year is where the board can evaluate at the end of the year, how did we do? Did the district achieve its workload? Now, maybe this year is a little bit different because that's not all flushed out. You can smile. I'm smiling right back. But I do think that, I mean, the board added this goal last meeting because we were missing that discussion of curriculum and rigor. Where is in our goals? We always want to see that in our goals. I think we need to tease some of this out would be my advice. Or to understand that this is a different year, but we did that last year too. So is it year three where we're going to really see some meted out goals? But I went back the two years prior to look at district goals, and I feel like we just had a lot more to measure up against. This is very vague if we are at the end of the year to all measure up against something. Like, there are things like approve an annual budget. Well, we approve an annual budget by statute. Now, we're approving an annual budget inside of the strategic goal, so we can all think about that while we're approving a budget this year. But they seem very vague, very broad. And maybe that was purposeful, but to me as a board member for a long time, these seem particularly broad.
So I can tell you, some of the department ones that I worked through seem very mundane. At some times, working with my department members, I would say this goal, right? So we're tremendously high performing school district for student achievement, right? So the idea of looking at the student achievement data, yes, right? We're always looking at student achievement data. Part of this for me would be. Because we do SPAC, we do NGSS, we do SAP, we do AP. What would we be looking for? Now, you may be looking to the super test. You tell us what we're looking for. But in a high performing district, we're doing extremely, extremely well, right? So if we're looking at achievement, we may be looking at smaller populations of students in some ways, right? So part of this might also be working through with the board to see on an annual basis or other ways, what would be the data, working collaboratively together, that we would like to look at on a cross basis. But I'm not sure that we have one other than what has been presented before.
Mrs. McCann?
I think what's challenging about goal two is that. We haven't really had a discussion at the board level. So if we think about accepting the fact that these are board goals and really defines what the board is looking for. This, this goal really describes administrative work. So it's a little bit of a mismatch with some of the other goals. I appreciate the attempt to define it. I think that at the board, we might have conversations like, we want to make sure that our STEM pipeline is robust. And we want to make sure that we are doing, I'm making things up, so.
No, that's in the strategic plan, so that's good.
We're with you. That, you know, the board wants to make sure that we are emphasizing STEM in a way that excites young men and women to pursue that field. Because we feel that's an area of focus. We might say something like. You know, I think some of the gifted stuff that was brought up may be an area where the board wants to make sure that it's a little bit different from what was defined in the strategic plan. But, but I don't think that necessarily we have a board, as a board, have agreed to strategic work around this. So I think you all were trying to capture what it might be, but I think we have to be careful. If these are board goals, then it's really kind of what, it would be capturing what discussion we've had with people. Again, if I were saying we were to take a point in time, I think. Really, to a certain extent, we're trying to just keep moving forward post pandemic, specifically in this goal and to set some, you know, kind of plant some seeds for the future. But anyway, I.
So the gifted one actually is a good example here that's, that would be included either directly or included directly in this one, yes.
Say it again, Dr.?
I said the gifted program, the review of the gifted program of conducting that, which was done. And then what are we doing with the recommendations, the data, the data system, decision making, how does that matriculate into implementation, which is, which is in here? That's a perfect example of it.
So maybe one way, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mrs. Akman.
Maybe one way to move forward. Given the time of year that we're at. New school year started, you know, I get itchy when we don't have. Goals and objectives and the school's about to start. Is that. We as a board could recognize that the strategic plan is really still informing the work. And that additional column we're looking for in the updates is that the board is really going to hold the administration accountable for specific. Updates. I like the STEM example. If that's what we decide as a board, I mean, that actually means that we're going to have to have another conversation as a board, what we're looking to say. But we're going to need very specific updates on programs to measure up against because it can't be at the end of the year, or we did X, Y, and Z. We're going to need, the updates might be more specific because the plan is more general. And maybe that's a way to hybrid it and move forward. And then next year, we're like, come up with some, some goals and objectives that feel a little more. I don't want to say robust because I know you have work behind it, but it's hard when we can't see the work behind it, and then we're asked to be governing. I mean, I'm trying to find a way to move forward. So my suggestion would be that these updates are going to have to be quite specific. Why we chose this, how we're looking at it, what's the effectiveness, it may need to come back the second update. Does the board agree? I mean, unless anyone else has a different way to move forwards.
Can I just, can I add to that just to provide some further clarification? And it also connects to Mrs. Ritchie's comment about the master agenda. So with the measures with goal two specifically, with, to your point, Mrs. Akman, about everything, about what? There's a large commitment that the board makes to curriculum development every year. So my thought was on the annual presentation of curriculum updates would be on what were those updates? And Mrs. Ritchie, you asked for that at some point too. So what actually is getting updated, what's different? So that would be the presentation of, it's a huge resource that's dedicated, I think that there would be, would be important. It would probably not be just one. It might be several presentations by level of what were those updates and what are the changes over the course of the year? With systemic implementation of co-teaching, we have a specific goal about differentiation and meeting the needs of all learners. One of our big professional developments is in the co-teaching model, and we have the PD plan this year. So that would be a time where we provide that update specifically to those things. So I'm articulating what's in my head that I clearly didn't articulate well on this paper. But I think that connecting to what you're saying, I just, I went backwards and made broader language than what was in the strategic plan. In part because what we spent some of our time at our admin retreat doing is working with administrators to develop school improvement plans. So that grain size gets smaller, then all the department leaders are creating department improvement. So that grain size gets smaller, then all the department leaders are creating department improvement plans. So when we talk about what are the metrics, that's where they're creating specific metrics where it makes the most sense based on what the new programs are. So I was trying to create that clear through line.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I would say, actually, what we're seeing today is very much like what we used to see, and then we worked away from to try to get more detailed plan. So I don't, I don't know if we're just back where we started, or the board is willing to make that shift. I just need the specificity. McCann, sorry, we talked about this for years, and probably Mrs. Ritchie.
Well, I think your, I think your update suggestion is a good one, and we're, we recognize that we're working through a strategic plan. A lot of, a lot of people actually do strategic plans and don't do anything with them. I have no doubt that we are not, not doing anything with it. That's the whole plan for us, and the board's gonna have a, obviously, a big participation role in the governance and oversight of that. So that, to me, is where the work is, that's where the robustness of it is. I threw in other ones because I tried to identify things that I thought were a priority, and also just self-improvement, whether you like those or not. But the big ones for me is like helping support the plan of the kids coming back to school and the implementation of that plan. I can't ask that after we're doing, like, we do all this stuff anyway, but I just can't overload everybody. That, that plan is, like, there's a lot in that. So I haven't had enough to do the updates in detail.
I think, you know, the sense I'm getting is, in Mr. Tranberg, you actually gave some of the update in the way you just described, the business and the development plans that were going on. So I said, that's some of the stuff that, you know, I'm used to hearing, which is leading to why we're changing or updating or moving to a different type of curriculum. So I think if we were in agreement that we're looking for a little more detail around that as the updates come, and making sure we see the progress from a strategic plan standpoint, and then we can tie it back to what, as a board, we're feeling we want to do for the goal and objectives. So is that, Mr. Senior?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Senior.
To accept the.
I have one more question.
I'm in the middle of making a motion, please, and then we can discuss it after.
Go ahead.
Proper, proper governance. So I'd like to make the motion to accept the goals and objectives as presented.
Okay. There's a second. Mr. Maroni, second. All in favor?
No, 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 discussion, discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Walmart, Paul St. Louis. So discussion.
I just have one quick thing. As we say, advance curriculum across content, I've kind of heard some whispers, some concerns. I would like our community not to go down the rabbit hole of some others. Can we just make very clear that at no point in time, at least as a board member, have I ever heard the district say that they are going to adopt or bring in a critical race theory curriculum to the Darien Public Schools? So when we talk about advancing curriculum in an annual presentation of curriculum, that is nowhere on the docket for the next school year, as far as I know. Is that correct?
That is not a euphemism for critical race theory.
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, any other, all right, any other discussion? Okay, we will move forward on.
We vote.
Yeah, so, yes, all, sorry, all in favor of Mr. Senior's motion? Thank you. Jill, so that is unanimous? Okay, thank you for the discussion. Thank you for all the comments. I think, Mr. Tranberg, Dr. Adley, and Mrs. Klein, you understand kind of a little more from an update standpoint, standpoint, and then we'll, we'll continue to, I guess, morph that update in terms of what we're looking for. So thank you all very much. We will move forward on the update on enrollment for the 2021, 2022 school year. People want to come to Darien and have their children educated based on the numbers, and people love that we're building a new school at Ox Ridge based on those numbers. So, Dr. Havens.
So at the last meeting, the board had approved the administration's use of an additional 1.0 for the sections. We haven't made that decision yet. We'll make that decision on Monday. So there's been some changes that happened even between whenever this memorandum was written. It looks like Tokonik have dropped a student or two, so we'll play that out. But in the meantime, Ox Ridge has added two students, and is one away from breaking the section. So we're just monitoring that at the moment, but we'll make that decision on Monday. So that, that's really the update of kind of where we are at the moment. I do have to bring to your attention another dynamic that has occurred. I thought we were going to be able to solve this, but haven't been able to solve it as of today. I think the final nail in the coffin, so to speak. With the addition of the sections that we have, so we have like 109 sections, potentially 110 sections, where we budget for 106. The PE, I'm gonna need a, we have done everything I could possibly do to ensure that we have scheduled properly or otherwise, but with the addition of the section, I'm gonna need an additional either point two or point three. Why the difference? If we go to another section, either at one of these schools, it'll be the point three. If we don't, it's a point two that I'm gonna need, just given those additional sections. And I know we haven't accounted for that before, but that's, that's, that's a need that I, that I've tried everything we can possibly do with the scheduling to make it work, and it's just not gonna work at this point.
You say PE, just for everyone's clarity, physical education.
Physical education, sorry. Thank you. And the other one is a point two for contractual purposes. As you know, one of our great teachers, Donovan, was appointed as vice president. And with that comes a point two FTE, because at the high, at the secondary level, that comes, the, the teacher who takes up that role by contract has a point two release time. And for elementary, it's different, there's a compensation associated with it. So essentially, I come tonight just to flag that I've got mainly a point two elementary physical education, or a point three, depending if another section breaks, and then the point two for the contractual.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Havens. Mrs. Ritchie.
First of all, thank you, and it was Mrs. Parent's recommendation that you add that column with the average class size. Love it, it's very good. So just for clarification, so we're looking at, at least in addition to the four potential budget control sections, an additional point four at a minimum FTE, potentially point five.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs. Ockman.
Where will we pull the money from?
At this point, I, I mean, at this point, or in the year, I haven't identified the money. It would have to, it has to sit there in salaries for the moment till we see how things play out in line items. But I can't identify that because I don't have surplus at this point.
So we'll, but we'll have to go and hire. So how, how are we gonna handle that?
Well, right now, you'd be running a deficit for the point five, if that's what it comes to. If I don't use this other section implicitly, I could use it for the point. Well, in this case, it'd be a point four, if I don't use the section. As long as the board understands that that's what I'd use it for, if I don't tip. If I do tip, I need, I need a point five. So I'd have to just take that out of salaries, and it would run, show as a deficit until and if we have to make a transfer or some description.
And when, when do you think you'll be making this decision?
Well, I'll make the decision about whether, whether the class requires additional section on Monday.
Okay. And the point two is contractual based on the union president being a secondary teacher?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, yes, Mrs. Parent.
If the elementary sections do not tip, has there been any consideration to adding an aid to each of those larger classrooms?
Explicitly, we haven't had, but we'll have that discussion on Monday.
I think that would go a long way in easing parents' discontent with large classes.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Any other comments or questions, Miss? Thank you for the update, Dr. Havens. We will move back to public comment, Michelle.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. The facilitator will identify you. Please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Michelle, I'll just poll the audience here first. Anyone in the audience to speak? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michelle, go ahead.
Ms. Liz Haynes, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
If you could state your name and your address, Ms. Haynes, thank you so much.
Sure. So my name is Liz Haynes, I live at 279 Narroton Avenue in Darien.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? It looks a little.
Thank you.
Okay. So I want to start and let you know that I really do have the utmost respect for all of you on the board, and appreciate your dedication and commitment to it. I'm actually on the board at Narroton Presbyterian Nursery School, so it is not lost on me the time and effort that each of you take in the work that you do. I am just here tonight to provide a point of view to help you, Rich, in your perspective as it relates to the health and safety of our children in the year ahead as we deal with the continuation of the pandemic. I will let you know that I had a little time to prepare, so hopefully my thoughts and comments are, make, make some good sense. I am juggling, obviously, being a working mom, and so I can sure you can appreciate that. So let me get to it. The headline is that I believe that parents should be given the opportunity to continue being the caretakers of their children. And by that, what I mean is that parents should be given the option to either mask or not mask their children when they attend school, as they do many other decisions for their children's life. A year ago, when COVID was a new virus and we were unsure of the impact, and there were little precautions that we could take. I can understand the argument at the time for wanting to require and mandating that children be masked in school. However, while I recognize that this is not a black and white argument, the logic points that it is unreasonable and, quite frankly, unacceptable at this point to mandate that children be masked in schools. And we'll give four specific reasons why. One, those that they are interacting with now that might be of higher risk. Specifically, I'm speaking about the teachers and the support staff have been given the opportunity to be vaccinated and therefore, quote, protected from any severe impact that they may have had before. Two, children are of extremely low risk of any negative impact for COVID. I have articles that I can point to you to, to the New York Times and Wall Street Journal, Wall Street Journal, if you provide me access of sending you those. Three, children are not the main cause of spreading the virus, who, by the way, are currently unvaccinated. And four, the negative effects of masking produces primarily social and emotional, as well as speech issues. I'm sure many of which you are probably more educated than I am as to what those impacts can be. So I just want to close with a few things. There are many other things that I believe in today's society we have lost perspective on that provide greater risk to our children than that of COVID. And yet, we do not mandate parents to protect their children against those. So for example, things of childhood obesity or diabetes. I'm sorry?
You're almost at time.
Okay, thank you. I only have a few more points, and then I'm done. So I just want to kind of make sure that we're keeping in perspective our masking policy against other risks to our children. Two, I understand genuinely that your position is a challenging one. You have experts, and I put that in quote, such as the CDC and others, who are telling you one thing, yet you may have your own point of view of what's logical, but yet you may have.
I'm gonna have to thank you, but you're, you're at time.
Okay, I will just leave you with a thank you, and I just encourage you to please fight for what you think is right, and not necessarily what the, quote, experts of our government do. And I genuinely appreciate you fighting for our children and for us as parents.
Thank you for speaking this evening, Mrs. Haynes, thank you.
Ms. Daria Chase, you are unmuted and recognized.
Can you hear us, Ms. Chase? You're on mute.
Okay, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, just your name and your address, please, thank you.
Okay, so Dr. Daria Chase, 10 Holly Lane in Darien. So thank you for giving me a chance to speak.
What was the address again, Ms. Chase?
10 Holly Lane.
10 Holly Lane, thank you so much.
So I'm a licensed clinical psychologist, and I see in my practice every day the detrimental outcome that wearing masks has on children. So namely, high anxiety and depression. And for younger children, wearing masks has a negative impact on their social development. So they cannot read each other's emotions. And, you know, it just limits their social interactions and how they can connect to each other. So as a mother and as a psychologist, I worry about the long-term consequences for children of wearing masks, and I strongly advocate, again, as a mother and as a professional who works in the field, to make wearing masks optional. So each parent can decide with their family based on the level of risk of their family members. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay. Give them a second. Okay. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Senior, second by Mrs. Parent, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all for attending this evening. Thank you for our friends that showed up in person this evening. Thank you, and thank you for all the folks that have zoomed in.